Southern New Hampshire, Boyd Hunt Creek.
My husband used to, you know, he's a builder, someone they always give us.
Is he, who owns it, is he good kind of mind?
Obviously.
That's why.
Okay, being seven o'clock, I'm going to bring the time by our board's select and meeting to order on September 2nd, 2021, at 7:00 PM. All three selectmen are present. I'm administrator sitting. And we have Fred Mullen doing a video recording for the benefit of the public that will be posted on the town website and YouTube by Lyndon Nickerson. Okay. Generally, we have this whole business here on the meeting minutes from August 19th.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 19th, 2021, as amended.
Second.
Motion was made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
They would have to be approved to.
And I forgot that. And we didn't remind you.
There's no reason to.
I'll actually, I'm just like, I'll remember it all public, uh, motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the 808, uh, non-public minutes for August 19th as written in 2020.
I'll second it. Motion is made. Second any discussion?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Open up the public comment. Fred, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. We demand some first public comments now too, from one of the regulars, um, section here.
I'd like to say go my name was.
Boy, I apologize. We have Scott McIntyre from Lansing, Keith, um, it's a conference for our 2019 audit. And we have your, uh, recommendations to the board, I think, here. Where would you like to start?
Well, very typically, I, I do start with the, the financial statements to give you a brief overview.
Okay.
Um, I can do that, um, or I can jump right to the, to our, uh, letter of recommendations.
If you want me to go over the financials, which page are you looking at on them?
I'm going to turn to, uh, probably two pages in, in, in this, in this document. It's the thick of the two, and I see one member that the selectmen doesn't have the report.
Excellent.
It's fine. I, I, I'm going to speak very generically about, about the results of the audit and, um, you know, you don't necessarily have to have it. In the first page, I would want to turn your attention to is, is page number one, which is our, uh, opinion on, on your financial status. This is what you hire us for. You know, in, in our, in our opinion, after following all of the appropriate, uh, audit standards that, that exist out there and that apply to Dunbar in the, in the calendar year 2019, in our opinion, your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for, for local governments here in the, in the United States. Sometimes referred to as a clean opinion, technically it's called an unmodified. It's not modified in any way, shape, or form. It's not, this is not news. It's been this way for the last several years. But nonetheless, it's still certainly a highlight of the audit when you can read an auditor's opinion that says your financial statements are materially fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The, the next page that I'd like to turn your, your attention to, uh, and I can, I can certainly go back to other, other pages should the board desire it, is, is page 13. The stuff after page one, you know, is, is management's discussion and analysis, a great resource to go back to and lay a point of time to, and to refresh your memories to why certain account balances may need change. And it's followed by, you know, both a, a long-term perspective balance sheet and a long-term perspective. It's called a statement of activities. It's a fancy name for a long-term perspective income statement. It has your pension liability and OPAP liabilities on there. I could talk about those at, at great length should the board desire it. Most often, I find that most readers of the financial statements are going to turn to your general fund balance sheet. And for you folks, it's on page 13 of your, uh, annual financial report, uh, your governmental funds balance sheet. And the focus is on that first column of numbers, the general fund or, or the primary operating fund of, of the town. And included in this column is, is, uh, also your, your general capital reserves. They, they get, they're accounted for separately, but they are consolidated with your general fund for formal reporting purposes and accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Even more specific to the first column of numbers, the, the focus almost always goes to the, that third number up from the bottom in your basic financial statements, in this case of your general fund. You see you have as of December 31, 2019, an unassigned fund balance of approximately $687,000. Now, that's up from the prior, the end of the prior calendar year of about $130,000, so. And obviously, this is, uh, again, the balance sheet date as of 12/31/19. Now, as you, as you, I'm going to take the liberty to turn to one more page. Quickly handy, I'll find it right here. Uh, all the way towards, towards the back on, on page, page 41. Page 41 is your, your, your budget versus actual page. You can see in that last column of numbers, I'll jump right to the bottom line, is a $400,000 surplus, $402,000 what are often referred to as favorable budgetary results of operation. Favorable on the revenue side, favorable on the expenditure side for a total of $402,000. Now, what's not present here or not explicitly shown here is during that cal- calendar year, you used about $260,000 of your fund balance towards the budget and, and the tax rate setting process. So if you take a winning or subtract, uh, $260,000 from, from that $402,000, uh, you, you, you get approximately 150, I'm very much rounding some, some numbers here. You get an approximately $150,000 increase, which it doesn't match exactly to the increase in your unassigned fund balance on page 13. And it shouldn't match exactly, uh, but certainly makes my job easier when the budgetary results of operations comes very close to your increase in the unassigned fund balance. The unassigned fund balance, again, went up about $130,000, and if we, if we just looked at page 41, and we see about $150,000 in favorable results of operations, after you factor in fund balance that was used to set the tax rate, that's what, so the reasons for the increase in your unassigned fund balance are explicitly outlined on, on page 41. It's the favorable revenues and the unspent or favorable, uh, expenditure results of operations for, for calendar year 2019.
Which as a board, we've been trying to, um, we've been trying not to run those numbers so close that we run into deficit with our budget. So we're, we know that that's planned every year when we set up. We've been trying to do that.
You know, we're relatively, we're conservative with our revenues, not knowing that they're not a given guarantee. That's very wise.
Well, some of these, uh, revenues coming in from the state, federal government, you know, over a period of time could change. With COVID coming along, we've been very, uh, reserved in how we watch those ones.
I give away some room in me, who knows what that's going to be like.
But knock on wood, luckily, it's been working out in our favor. It helps us with our budget at the end of the year as well.
Excellent, excellent. You know, you mentioned COVID, and I probably, I know it goes without saying, but I almost feel a responsibility, you know, with the, the, the date. It adds up, these financial statements are through 12/31/19, which is, is of course pre-COVID. And so it doesn't factor in any, uh, effects that may have happened as.
No, but the thing is, uh, this, this board as a group, we inherited, inherited a very limited reserve.
Yeah.
Capital reserve.
About $26,000, I think, in there when we were done.
And one of, one of our goals, this is something we, and one of our goals was to reestablish an appropriate reserve to protect the town from any catastrophic, financial catastrophe. And I think we've done a good job.
Can I just comment on that?
Fred.
I just want to lend a thanks to Lansing because it was, you, these exit conferences that really educated the board and the whole under the process of what was important for their responsibility and for my guidance to give them. But, um, they gave us a lot of tips. You guys have given us a lot of tips over the years to, um, make sure that we understood what these numbers really meant.
Back on page 13, I, I'm going to bounce around more than I anticipated, so bear with me, please. Back on page 13, since the second matter of capital reserves has come up, um, I spoke mostly on this page about the third number up from, from the bottom of the 687. Two more numbers up from that where it shows your committed fund balance of 579,000. Essentially, that 579 is your capital reserves as of 12/31/19.
Yeah. Which we're trying to stay at least at the 5% of our.
Yeah.
Which was the DRA way of answer.
But DRA looks at us and saying that we, since we don't have many bonds, uh, we're not financially at risk. But the thing is, they, they like the 5%, we like the 5%.
Sure, sure.
So that's been our target.
Even small town, you gotta have, uh, you gotta have reserves. We saw the town had to go lose their whole, uh, public highway garage with all their trucks in it, so, you know, they obviously had to dip in theirs pretty heavily, not their insurance, so, you know, we kind of watched that and put some better, um, things in place for our own town, so.
That was really the highlights of the, of the financial statements. There's certainly a wealth of other information in there. I really skipped right over the, what I refer to as the long-term basis financial statements. It includes all of your, your capital assets. Your general fund is called modified pool basis, but by and large, it's very close to a cash basis. The, 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 the page that I skipped over dealt with, you know, a lot of your capital assets, uh, your net pension liability as a contributing member to the New Hampshire retirement system, uh, and your OPAP where your other post-employment benefit liabilities and all of the, uh, related deferred outflows and inflows. If, if the board would like me to get into that, um, I, I, I certainly can.
I don't think so. I think you'd like to review your, your recommendations mostly.
Thank you. That's what I, I, that's what I anticipated. Um, you know, in our management, we've, we've got a few follow-up recommendations from, from prior years. Some have been resolved, some still need, need to be addressed. Um, you know, I, I will probably, I can always go back and, 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 and address each of them. Um, but I, I'm going to, you know, just point out that items number one, uh, i- i- is, is still remain unresolved during our audit of, uh, calendar 2019. Essentially, what we're saying here is you have some withholding accounts in your general ledger. Uh, you know, withholdings from, from payroll and things like that. Those should, normally, those are going to have a, a credit balance associated with them. In your general ledger, they have debit balances, which indicates that it might not be the best matching of money going into these accounts and money going out of these accounts, which is the normal process for withholding accounts and the activity associated thereof. So we continue to recommend that you analyze these, uh, liability accounts, liability balances, and, um, you know, true up the balances, if you will, and, and to resolve the, uh, the, the, the issue of the fact that they should have credit balances, but they actually have debit, debit balances.
I'm going to just write that down. Doesn't really state that as easily as you're stating, and so should have credit, uh, yeah, credit balance.
Can I just speak on it just slightly? Okay, while you're writing? Um, so we kind of inherited it when I came on, um, and what we found with our BMSI program is that we, behind the scenes, I, we've touched on it slightly, that they work with thousands. Sometimes it's a rounding thing that's in the system. So I think what I'm hearing, um, Scott say is that we may be taking pennies out on a rounding basis that is adding up or subtracting from different accounts, and we haven't been able to iron that out and straighten those numbers.
I don't think you're trying to run numbers that slate, are you?
I don't, I don't think so. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
But it's been accumulating over the years, so.
Right, they don't normally come down that small when you're looking at accounting. You know, they round everything up down. I don't think that they were.
But I have been working, I'm working with co-host advisors, that's one of our, uh, budget goals, that they're going to look at those and we're going to, um, come up with a plan to hopefully clear up the outstanding balance and then be able to monitor it a lot more closely going forward so that it doesn't continue to.
Is there any simple thing that you can tell us that would help correct that?
Uh, not simple. It would need analysis.
It's research.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Is it Tammy from Co-Host Advisors?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so I guess that's work in progress.
Issue number two, we consider to be resolved. Um, you know, we won't necessarily speak about that. Uh, the third issue, there's, there's, uh, really three bullet items, uh, if, if you will, within our comment number three. Um, you know, just a quick preview here of the three, the one in the middle, the second one, uh, was resolved during the 19 engagement. Uh, but the first item and the last item were not. And, and the first one really is that in the general ledger, the due-to, due-from accounts, which, as well as transfers. There's many funds in, in a, in a town government, and oftentimes, there is some pooled cash that goes on, and one fund may loan the other funds some, some monies, which is a normal and customary process. That's not, that's not the issue that we, that we're seeing here. What we're seeing is that the due-to account in one fund, or, or the sum of all the due-from and due-to accounts need, need to, net to zero. That's the allocation of cash between the different funds within an accounting sys- system. Uh, much the same way, transfers, if the money is transferred from, I'll just keep it simple, Fund One to Fund Two, the transfers need, need to balance out. You know, it gets more complicated in, 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 in smaller towns in particular, when you've got library funds over here and you've got some funds over here, and all of those activities aren't necessarily accounted for in a single general ledger where you can see this. Uh, so some additional procedures need to be done to ensure that any of the accounts that, uh, may be off, off books, uh, the due-to, due-from accounts associated with those activities and all of the other accounts in the general ledger, these accounts net to zero. Due-to, due-from accounts need to net to zero, and transfers in and transfers out accounts need to net to zero. And that's an important control that the town, uh, needs, needs to implement to ensure the completeness and accuracy of everything. The third bullet item, uh, the town, the town collector and the, and the town clerk daily cashouts, um, should include signatures of the parent or reviewer. This is an internal control issue. You know, we didn't, we didn't find any discrepancies, but particularly in a smaller community when there's, there's a single, there may be a single individual involved, having another person review and sign off on the completeness of, of the procedures and the, the actual cash out from the daily, daily collections can be an important control, uh, to provide oversight to procedures that are, are performed. So we're recommending you implement some improved oversight of those procedures.
Now, that oversight would be done daily or weekly, or?
Well.
And then we have a limited staff.
I, that's, that, that.
Ideally, it's their whole thing out a lot of times at nighttime when I was a regular, just coming home, so, um.
Well, when you answer the question this way, that's the right question to ask. You know, I, I, I don't want to sit here and tell you not to do it, Kevin. But I understand the situation that, that you're in, and what we're suggesting here is an internal control. And one of the foundational elements of an internal control in any organization is that the cost of the control should not outweigh the benefits. So that's where the board needs to come in and play. I'm not trying to push your question back on you.
No, I'm just saying, we'll like, do it possibly the next morning or something.
No, but the thing is, right now, if we have no control versus some control. Yes, yes. I, I just don't want to sit here and tell you on camera that you could do it once a month. That's not what I want to, that's not what I want to say.
It's got to be a reasonable approach to it.
Yes, uh, but I do understand and I do want to stress that the cost of the control should not outweigh the benefit.
Okay.
Over onto, uh, pa- page four. Uh, item number four is resolved, so we're not necessarily speak about that unless there are any follow-up questions. Issue number five at the bottom of page four is to reconcile police special detail records with, with the general ledger. Um, presently, uh, the finance office, office maintains some records of the general ledger that, that document special detail billing and collections and, and that type of activity. And the general ledger and these outside records need, need to be reconciled on, on a regular basis, since, and I'll define regular basis in this case. You know, you're not necessarily talking about a lot of cash here. It's more of the accounting records. That's something that could be done on, on a monthly basis, perhaps even on, on a quarterly basis. But when there are activities external to the general ledger, and those activities need to be accounted for in the general ledger, you must have a reconciling procedure in place to ensure that the general ledger is, in, in the, in the end, complete and accurate. In our, in our last comment, and this goes, goes to oversight again, this is over on page five, uh, is to implement, document, review, and library bank reconciliations. Again, the library has, has their own accounts, as I'm sure as the, the board, board knows. Uh, but they are, they need to be incorporated into the, what I refer to often as the umbrella of the town of Dunbar's financial status. They may be legally permitted to have their own funds, but they still come under the reporting entity of, of your, your community.
Is the library trustees, which have a thumb, they have a thumb on the funds. I mean, they really have a thumb on the.
Oh, I.
And I think it's, I mean, they can't spend a penny over there without having the supervision of the library trustees of that. But that's okay, they have to go into the general fund where they're getting the money out. Since we give them the checks, those will have to reconcile, so that's something that we can implement here to do.
No, can, can I just speak on that? We actually tried to do that originally when this comment came up. I was literally getting their reconciliation report and data entering them as a manual journal, which wasn't working because they pay their own bills, they write their own checks, and they do everything internally through QuickBooks. That's how they pay their bills. What we give them is the funds to pay those bills, and that's why it's.
We only have the oversight.
The oversight's not there, and, and so for me to manually spend hours to reconcile and put in, you know, a hundred checks that they paid for the bill through their, you know, their monthly expenses, it wasn't the true reconciliation that they, they're advising us on. The, the true thing would be to have the trustees say to this office, you paid this bill, this bill, this bill. Do away with the accounting and that. But that's, do you have RSA that they're independent, or they don't have to fall under our guidelines, or?
That gets tricky, because I agree with what Lynn's saying. It's, you know, you've been, there is a RSA that permits that, but, and I'm not speaking against the RSA, but there still has to be internal controls associated with those funds. And that's the recommendation here is to have some oversight.
Even if they gave us their reconciliation and we reviewed it.
Well, that's, that's one, that's essentially what we're, we're saying.
Right.
I would love, and, and again, I've used the phrase complete and accurate a couple of times, because that's what I do. As, as an auditor, you know, that's one of the assertions that, that we assert to here. Um, and certainly, your general ledger would be more complete and accurate if those library accounts were in there. It doesn't happen all the time. I, you're, you're not alone with that. You're, you're, you're not alone. It happens most of the time that, that it's not. Because as was pointed out, the RSA permits that.
And the thing is, uh, we have elected officials who are, uh, board, library trustees, who are charged with the oversight. And so it doesn't have to fall upon the oversight of this committee, of this board, nor the town employees, because there's already an established group of individuals. What he's saying, there's nobody overseeing that. There's no oversight from the town level with that.
Well, we have oversight in the sense that we set the budget. True. And the thing is, we're limiting how much access they have to. They, I mean, they don't have free access to what we, I mean, our, our town treasury. They have a limited amount of money which they can draw on. I, I, I don't know this, perhaps I should have, but my guess is you cut them one check.
Yeah.
And send it over there.
Yeah, well, we're kind of monthly.
You know, my view, we, we wouldn't want someone to run off with, say, $300,000 in one check, and then we have no oversight to that. It's not going to happen.
Well, what he's saying is, we actually have no oversight on it now.
Oh, absolutely.
Because we don't even look at the reconciliation or that.
No, we don't go into the granularity, but we have oversight in the sense that we have a budget review process, and we review what the expenditure and the money on during the year. And so that's our oversight, even though it's a yearly basis. We're looking at it on a yearly basis as we establish a budget for them. We're not doing it month to month. Um, yeah, and.
They say we have none.
I'm saying that, that a quarterly review of their internal control procedures, are they reconciling things on a regular basis?
That's what we could establish.
That's what you could establish.
They are, and I receive a copy of those every month. Should I be giving those to the selectmen to review?
And then maybe keeping it separate?
I do. It's in a, it's in a, uh, a book, every month. But I guess the question is, is that what I should be doing?
Um, I, I, I probably don't think that part is necessary, but that's really for the board to decide.
Okay.
You know, if, if, if the town official is obtaining that evidence that reconciliations of town accounts that are external to the general ledger are being reconciled on a regular basis, then that's, that's the internal control.
So we may be doing that already.
You may be doing that already, and in our inquiry, we may not have understood everything that was.
Understood.
Taking place.
So you're getting a copy of the reconciliations.
Every month, yeah.
But you're not reviewing it at all.
I have not.
To make sure there is.
That's what I look at, is the ending balance and their, and their reconciling, beginning and end, so I, that's the problem I look into it.
A superficial review of it, we're having at this point. Now, let me ask you this. Um, should we do like a, a cover page where the review has been done and she signs off on it monthly?
I mean, I could sign right on the report. That's what I do with the, um, town forest. That one I put into the system, so that's part of our general ledger. And then, and that's based on the statements that Fred Mullen provides me for the town forest funds. And he comes in and reviews it with me, and he signs off on it as well. So every month is reconciled and reviewed by both of us.
So why don't we do that, Lynn? At least we'll know you've looked at it and reconc, you know, you checked their reconciliation.
Just sign off on it. Okay, ready, okay.
It's about establishing a control.
Yeah.
Check them out. It's just a second set of eyes making sure that, you know, the money is flowing properly on every aspect of it, yeah.
Those, those weekly, uh, those dinners they have weekly at the restaurant, we got to cut those out. That really is a, a quick summarization of, of, of our recommendations and, um, of your, of your basic financial statements to the calendar year in 2020.
Lynn, what I thought was to maybe ask him the question in reference to the, uh, REITs across Dunbar and those types of funds, so.
I was, that's why I forgot Mike, because that's my question.
Yeah.
So we have, we have a, an individual who has a philanthropic, uh, project going on where he collects money to do this project, but it's given to the town. We're accepting it under the RSA, which I don't think we have to do. But it's going into the town, uh, is controlling that money, well, controlling banking the money. We become a bank.
Goes into a fund.
It goes into a fund, but it's, we have no control over how the money's spent, procurement policy, or anything. I think it's co-mingling of funds. I'm just curious if, suppose we got a hand in it, in it, like Peterborough. And I know it's a, it's a small amount of money, but if it got moved, does the town become liable?
We're talking about five, six thousand dollars.
And sometimes he's collected.
Yeah, it managed, it means.
That's what did.
High was extreme, yeah.
So it's REITs across Dunbar, and we've set up this fund. He didn't really want to handle it.
Yep.
And so we did it at the town. Are we doing something wrong by doing that?
I wouldn't say you're doing something wrong. You know, you do have to be mindful of security of, of the funds and what would happen, you know, if you, you mentioned Peterborough, something you got a bit. If that happened here, uh, would you be responsible for?
The loss.
The, the loss, thank you. Lost, lost words there. Uh, but I don't think you're doing anything wrong, because, um, actually, there's a, there's a new accounting standard. Your, your 2020 financial statements will, will look a little bit different, because there's a new accounting standard out, uh, fiduciary activities. Um, and what is being described, what I know about it, you know, it will meet the definition, um, of this, it'll be called a custodial fund.
Yes, but the thing is, I, I'm concerned that it's not a town, uh, project. It's an individual project, has nothing to do per se with the town. Why, why are we even going down this path and collecting money when it's, I mean, uh, we have no supervision of where it's spent, how it was spent, and all we're doing is, uh, expending town resources, collecting money, uh, and banking it, and allowing this person to spend it like anywhere he wants, which.
And we're using town, we're using town checks, right?
Yeah.
We're using town checks to reimburse the person for those expenses. And I don't know, but I think it's cleaner to see someone establish a 501(c)(3) through the Secretary of State rather than running it through the town and having us the holding company for the assets, so. I'm, I'm just concerned with where this is going, and when we open the door for one, it becomes problematic, because someone else could come along, as we've experienced once before, and have their own. It could be somebody that wants to keep people in their homes in Dunbar that raised money and say, hey, sure, the town should be taking care of this for us, and then when we find someone that needs it, they'll. And then when we find someone that needs it, the phone is.
I do. And, and if I may, the, the last couple of comments that I've heard, you know, um, you know. Can you be doing this? I will, I will tell you that, that governments, based on my experience, I've done this type of work for thirty two plus ye- plus years. You know, they, they do this type of work. Um, should, should you be expending town resources for it? That's another question that I'm, I'm not gonna co-comment on. Um, I have seen governments, um, build the, I'll call it the organization, because I don't know what else to re- refer to it, um, so that the town ends up being compensated for, uh, the use of your resources here. Um, to whichever gentleman talked about potentially a five oh one C, yeah, that certainly is an option. Uh, but I, I will tell you, I have seen governments do, uh, what, what Dunbarton is doing in this case. But just because others are doing it, it's something you're not comfortable with, I don't think you have a legitimate reason to say that you do not wanna expose the town to any unnecessary risk. Uh, these are not your monies. What I was describing as far as the custodial funds forgiven, that's, that's where you'd be on your financial statements. It's not your money. Much the same way, and I'm not comparing, you know, the, the, the money you collect for school districts, um, you know, to, to the situation that you advised me of, but I mean, a separate school, school district. You, you are collecting money on their behalf and transmitting it over to them. That's not your revenue and you do not have control of how those resources are spent. This activity seems to come under the same general look and feel. I'm, I'm drawing a blank on how else to describe.
Some other towns do do it. It's got something way out of the norm.
No, but you're, you, this body that I'm speaking with, you're, you, you make, you should always do your due diligence as to whether or not you wanna assume this risk. But I've certainly seen other communities that have old home days fund on their, on their, in their, uh, accounting system and in their financial statements. But it's money that's raised, the town does not set the fees for it, so it's not their revenue. And the town does not control how the resources are spent. I was getting a little technical there, because those are the two criteria that go back to the accounting standard. Whose revenue is it? And that is determined who, who sets the rates and charges for what people are paying, or in this case, the money you're receiving. Uh, and who controls the resources? It's very clear, as described to me, that, you know, the town of Dunbarton does not control the use of these resources.
Old home day is probably a tough one for us, because we do control the, how the money's spent.
And this is what makes this accounting standard, it's causing me gray hair, because, you know, some communities, your community, it sounds like you do control that.
Yeah.
I'll tell you my community, it does not.
All right. And if people, you know, donated to old home day, then obviously it's different, like he says, but our money is set aside for part of it as well.
Anything left over, we get back, or any profit made.
But I mean, we do collect funds from vendors that are on there on old home day, so we do have money coming in from that, so it's, uh.
Yeah. But it's, it's, you know, it's, again, it benefits the entire town.
Well, I think REITs across Dunbarton is a benefit for our entire town as well.
It's, it depends where you're, where you're living, in the six feet under or above.
Yeah, but we appoint people to the old home day committee, because it's a town council. So that's, that's the gray area that I'm concerned with, because we've already experienced one, uh, project here where someone's come to us. And then because of that, we had additional people coming to us with the same request, which puts an onus on us.
Like, we like consistency. Once you open the door for one, you can't discriminate.
You can't discriminate against the rest.
Then my suggestion would be you establish policy on this stuff. You know, that way. I'm, I'm going to be, I'll be an auditor here, I guess.
No, but we'll do it for three years, and the next group will do it.
Well, that's my, that's my point, is, you know, obviously.
Well, we appreciate your, your candidness, appreciate that. Yeah, we're just looking for a little background from you on, you know.
Does it involve his mics? I understand your concern from where, from your chairs.
Okay. Um, I think that's the only, did you guys have any other questions to deal with?
Well, I just wanna say, uh, I understand the business went through some turmoil with us this year, and we've already seen you go, but, uh, business is business, and so we wish you well. Appreciate it very, very much.
Yeah.
We've, we've been in communication with you, you new auditors, supplied them with, um, all the standard documentation that they look for. And, um, I've not heard anything else from them at this point, but if they have any future questions, I'll do what I do my best to help them with their process.
I appreciate your help. I think Lean, you have a check in the office, don't you?
Do you want me to mail it or you want to grab it?
Mail's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, Lean. Thanks for coming in. Have a nice evening.
Number three. Okay. Yeah. Brett, you wanna come up and we'll, uh, work on your next?
All right.
You said five minutes in your email.
Oh, man, it's gonna take longer than that, I think.
General Conservation Commission, Brett St. Paul.
Okay. Um, I got a couple things on my, uh, list, and, uh, number one is I really wanted to thank, um, the board and Lean and Jeff for the work that was done to, like, wrap up that Scott Warner situation from, you know, getting him a home to, you know, a place to live, to, you know, getting rid of the, you know, home site there and so forth. It's like, it's a park there, and so, you know, great job, you know? Yeah.
Just have the extra scene to scene down to it.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It was, you know, so, anyway, you know, all that work was definitely noticed and appreciated. And I think, um, just from my perspective, it's kind of the difference between a little town like Dunbarton and maybe, um, a place like, uh, where that River Dave, you know, hermit was living, you know, I can't remember the town, but, you know, they didn't treat him with respect. And, yeah, so we could have been in that same kind of situation. We didn't, yeah, but anyway, we didn't make, make the Concord Monitor, right? So it's because we did the right things, and so thank you very much for all that consideration, yeah.
Yeah, it's money for us too, see that?
Well, yeah, but, well, it, that was a lot of work on your part, you know, like duly noticed.
It was, but you know, when something like that happens, you wanna do the right thing, just like you didn't wanna be treated, and I think that's.
Yeah.
You know, the board went that way, and I think you were two department heads.
Yeah, see, it's the goal that what, you know, do unto others as you'd have them do unto you, right?
It was a community effort to basically make it happen too.
Yeah, and again, you know, you took care of that guy, you know, so thank you. Um, so I'm here on a couple things. The, um, Kimmel Pond, um, easement situation, I think Lean sent you some stuff on that. And so this is just, uh, paperwork to roll the five acres that, that was the house lot there into the, um, conservation area. And so I think there's some things that maybe you gotta sign.
Yeah. Something I, that you need to notify us.
Yeah.
There is, Lean.
And so I'm just here to answer any questions on that, if you got any.
Just, was it a separate entity that five lot, I mean, was it?
Yes. Yeah, so the way it worked out originally is that that five acre lot was never subdivided from the whole Nasekis property, which is six hundred and ninety nine acres.
Okay.
And so what they did was they put the big easement on everything and then excluded that five acres. And so all we're doing is.
Bringing it back.
Pushing it back.
That's, that's kind of what I'm.
Yeah, it was, you know, um, you know, passed at the town meeting back whenever.
I'll pass this around for signature. Probably wanna date it to today's date. Let Lean do the dating on it. I'll sign it. I was, uh, I read through this. I think I had forgotten that that was the conservation easement went to the state. It's back quite a while ago, and I hadn't remembered that portion of it.
Yeah. Yeah. And so it's a, the federal government gave, gave us a lot of money for that, and so the state holds it. And we have to report to them every year.
Yeah. Lean, up on the top there, you'll have to date the, with this date as well, okay? So that was in the process. Thanks for your work getting that done and written up properly. And now it's all one entity, I think it'd be beneficial to the town.
Yeah, I mean, that was the wall of the town, you know, so.
Yeah.
And again, thanks to Lean for suggesting that we work with, um, Carol Weaver. Had to pull her chain in a little bit.
Okay. You wanna go on to the Holden Engineering?
Yeah. Um, and so just here to answer any questions on that contract, we put it out to bid to five surveying companies. Um, got one response back. It was a professional grade RFP, um, that, uh, Brian Clummell helped us develop.
And when you put that out, did you put it out to the public as well?
Um.
Was it handed to five individuals or was it listed in the paper and on the?
Nope, just sent to five surveying companies.
It's sealed bid.
It's a sealed bid, but normally you post that, you know, and then ask for your responses in a couple weeks. Just wanna make sure we're following.
Yeah, we gave, you know, we gave, uh, almost two months to respond to the bid, yeah.
And you only got the one back?
Yeah, we only got, again, we sent to all local, you know, companies that were capable of responding to the bid.
Lean, do you have that paragraph in there of, uh, sending that bids out there, the RFPs?
I think they used our template. Did you use my template? I gave you the template.
I wasn't asking about that.
No, I mean, we've done it.
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
I just wanna make sure we met the legal requirements of posting the RFP. I guess we'll sign this, but we should, uh, follow up on that and just double checking.
Okay, but anyway.
You follow my thought with that?
I got it, but the, the deal is that right now it's really difficult, number one, and number two. Um, my, you know, sort of careless person to, you know, company to, you know, respond to this RFP never responded. And I've been trying, I've been trying to get this thing done for three years, so, yeah, getcha.
Will you come just take one of our signatures on this?
Yeah, you're lucky one.
Will the government here hold an engineering, an individual owner, individual owner?
That would be. It's just a contract between the town, and they're using their funds from their, um, contribution.
Conservation.
But because it's a, um, so like we should sign the contract, so it'll be.
And it's not just surveying, it's like cutting the whole line through, you know, the perimeter, blazing trees, painting the trees, and posting our little four inch by four inch signs, yeah.
I think, uh, you wanna read this individual guarantee and see if we need to sign that as well and help them, we can take a look at that. I'm talking about this right here.
Yeah, I signed that.
Maybe we do, because it is checked off.
It's a template, he said, right? When he gave that to you, he said he doesn't really, it's a, um, standard template, I think.
Nine two?
Yeah.
I'll sign it just in case if it works.
Is that just to qualify, I think, of what is in the return money to us after he signed it?
Hand it over, Lean. I guess it goes back to tonight. And that's from the Bella Brook, right?
Yeah.
Three years, a long time to get, get that going.
You know, it's just, it is what it is. Anyway, I think we, the, the guy we hired, the company, um, he looked, he was here, he got, he had a little bit of forum for our meeting, and he was looking up there at that picture up there. And he's like, oh, that's really interesting, because you can overlay that over your conservation area, and you could see what was fields and blah, 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 back in the day. And I talked, you know, we were going over the, um, you know, work and so forth. And, uh, I mentioned, you know, Meadow Road, and he's like, yeah, I drove through that. Uh, and I'm like, oh, okay, check that. He's like, so, you know, the guy's like sixty years old, he owns a company, you know, I got a good feeling about him doing a good job, so.
Yeah, I think yes.
Yeah.
That's a good company.
And, uh, the only other thing as a private citizen I want to mention is just like how awesome old home day was. Um, that was aw- great, you know? I brought my mom up from Chester and, uh, yeah, so.
It was low key, but very well done.
It's really, really well done. And I thought the fact that maybe the town, um, subsidized the cost of hamburgers and hot dogs.
You know, um, we didn't really subsidize it, we just charged the raw cost instead of.
Yeah.
Inflating it, which was the old fashioned pricing, which is, you know, we've done that the last couple of years, and I tell you, that's, I like to keep it that way, that's a big hit.
I just think it just sends such a statement to people about how old home is, you know?
Yeah, and the free ice cream, okay.
Yes, but free is one thing, but like, whatever, you know?
Yeah.
You know, fifty cent hot dogs or a dollar hot dogs or whatever, yeah, it's just really great.
Yeah, I do like that portion of this one.
Yeah, so thumbs up for that. Thank you.
And did you know anybody toward the upstairs, the old town hall yet?
I personally do not, yeah, but I heard actually other people I talked to did, yeah.
Yeah.
What if you did?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks for coming in, Brett.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lean.
Thank you.
Do you wanna take any of those with you?
I'll have to know, right?
Okay, you do. All right. Let me go back to the agenda here, see what we've got on here.
Donation, donation, we reverse re restitution funds.
Yeah.
Want me to start?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, and we have two hundred dollars restitution for reimbursement of police expenses associated with cruiser after arrest by the police department. So I'd like to make a motion that we, for RSA three one colon ninety five dash B, subparagraph, Roman number three, subparagraph B, to accept two hundred dollars in restitution funds for this, uh, that's a.
Second. Motion made, second and in discussion.
Yes, I'd like to have this, the police department just give me a quick, uh, one second, uh, one minute explanation of exactly what, what this is about.
Uh, one of our officers made a DWI arrest, and the RSD threw up in the back of the cruiser. So we had to hire a professional company to come and do some biologic cleanup. That's what that cost is.
I see you recall that.
We asked for reimbursement, uh, through the court process.
And that will, um, the police department also has a discussion request, and this will be put into the department, as, uh, as a main excited putter.
Can I just state that the true correction for this will be an adjustment journal to credit what we paid through their accounts and charge it to a, uh, liability account, which is the unanticipated account now.
Okay. Motion made second, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, motion passes. All right. We've got a, um, review of the personnel policy, I think, um, I'm gonna copy that in a second. Lean, you made some changes on the personnel policy that were updates that we should have done.
You should be able to check that.
I want you to read in here, all right? Right here, this one here, right?
Mm-hmm.
And here's your review.
Yeah, that might be easier for me to point out the pages that were changed than.
I think if we read through these changes, then we'll make, uh, one motion to agree on those changes. That sound okay? You guys have a copy of them changed, or do I do it line by line?
Well, if you do it line by line, then we can.
Okay.
Got this, a discussion to be had in this moment.
All right, because the policy superses any prior version, I'm deleting all the amended updates except for the two that came in twenty twenty one. I'm in agreement with that.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, checking off line number one. Um, number two, the item, do you approve the wording on page? Number two, the item, do you approve the wording on page three? Copy on the website and criminal records check.
Yeah, I wanted, I have a slight change maybe, you know, kind of wanna look at your employment with the town of Dunbarton. I would change Wilt to may be subject to criminal records check.
I think that sounds like a good, uh.
It gives more latitude, more responsibility.
May be subject.
Because it might be somebody that's already in town that you know. And you probably would be wasting your time.
Yeah, and, and resources, yeah.
You know?
Okay.
Lee, did you make that change on your paperwork?
I did, yeah.
All right. Item number three, page six, part-time employees. Approved reference of exceeding thirty-five hours cap does not trigger full-time employment benefits.
That's our paper, six.
Part-time employees, individuals from a regular schedule towards less than thirty-five hours per week. Part-time employees are not eligible for benefits described in this manual except where noted. And where the extent required by state and federal law, exceeding thirty-five hours cap from time to time does not trigger full-time employment benefits.
It was something that the board had.
Yeah.
You know, things I like.
Any clarification?
Mike, could you make it, change it from time to time to change it occasionally? You know, does it make it occasionally?
Exceeding the thirty-five hour cap.
Occasionally.
Occasionally, okay.
No problem with that. And, well, it's for the police department, I think they're the ones who made a revelation a couple of years back on it.
Okay. Item number four, page six, elected officials do. Do we want to insert something that reference our elected officials pay?
You may mention that at one point.
Or do we just reference that the elected official compensation will call the annual CPI for time employees?
Well, here's where we get caught in the quid pro quo, because we have elected officials that come to us after receiving their. The, not the CPI, but, you know, the wage rate change, and then they're asking for an increase in their pay, so. I, you know, I ran that, and I was thinking of either or, and I thought, maybe at the time of the, prior to election, they come to us when they're running for election again, and request that we look at their pay versus using their, you know, the.
But is this something that we're going to inform all elected officials, like, for example, board of assessors? They say nothing, do nothing, they get this small step in for their responsibility. The board here, you all have different ears that you are up for reelection, do you want? I, I mean, I just assume leave it out, but you have spoken about it in the past, how do we control managing compensation for elected officials? Other than what they're currently receiving, which is the CPI?
Or do you just wanna use that? And we don't use the CPI.
Oh, okay.
We use the average weekly increase.
Okay.
And we don't always follow that either.
No, we don't.
Take it for any jabber.
So it could be set by this liquid, I don't know, that maybe that.
So it could be, I don't care either way.
I think we should.
I just, wait, get the air in there, I want some loud from elected officials.
Well, I thought we should change number four until we think about that further.
Okay.
Okay.
Hold off on that change, okay. Page eight, small change to separate create plans should include full and part-time employees. The board had to change the rate. Yeah, 'cause we do, do separate create these for workers themselves.
It's more of a change.
Yeah. Item number six, page twelve, highway contractor winter maintenance. Do we want to review bullet number two, equipment must be operational, ready, and or onsite at the Dunbar County Department?
Yeah, I don't think onsite though is necessary.
Also, bullet number four recommended adding language that the subcontractor equipment must be personally available to report for winter maintenance services.
See, it's, it's a service we're asking if.
To qualify for a five-hour weekly standby site.
See, what we had this past year, we had one person, one person became ill, he didn't qualify for it, but if he could have gotten another driver.
The link's not, I think that would have satisfied.
That would have satisfied. So, I don't think, must be personally able to report, just must be able to provide, subcontractor must be able to provide services. For the winter maintenance, provide, winter maintenance service to qualify, be able, not personally, because if someone becomes ill, he says, "Oh, I'm gonna get my brother who's got a appropriate licensure, he can drive my truck into the rock for me."
And who's gonna confirm that they, they're qualified to run their equipment?
I think it all has to go back to the highway department supervisor. A road agent.
And I'm gonna invite the road agent to chime in on you too.
The other thing is I don't like it that it weren't in on the first one, I didn't agree that has to be at the Dunbar Highway Department, 'cause a lot of those are not stored there.
Correct.
That's why I said it shouldn't have to be stored, it shouldn't even. As long as you got it ready to go.
So, just delete the second part of that sentence.
After the comma, just saying subcontractor equipment must be operational, ready, period?
Operational and ready.
Operational and ready. Period, okay.
And then you could put on the subcontractor must be personally able to report, or have somebody report in his stead for winter maintenance services.
I think what Mike was saying is just to remove that word personally.
Yeah, it just must be able to provide.
Must be able to report, must be able to provide services to report for winter maintenance service.
Good.
Subcontractor must be able to provide for winter maintenance services to qualify for a five-hour weekly standby. This, we gotta reword that, but the thing is, I like to pick the word personally out of it. Now, I could get an opinion from the road agent here too on this.
Yeah, I, I know what you're trying to do, and that makes sense. If the, if the machinery or truck or whatever is available, that's the key. Like you said, if they have another operator that can function correctly and appropriately, it's not harm, I mean, it. Piece of equipment is what you're actually hiring with an operator.
Could we just strike that, strike that out completely?
I just don't think you ought to make it too cumbersome.
Exactly.
I had, first, I heard of all the changes anyway, but they seem pretty reasonable.
So how can we word that to sound better, 'cause I don't like the wording of your new one either, it's just too long.
No, I, I'd say strike them, strike it out.
Uh, well, that's where we were this year, with the challenge of whether we needed to provide a stipend for someone who couldn't provide the service.
Right, my thing is, must be personally able to, but what we're asking for this.
Well, in this situation, I was hoping to fill in.
Right, but I worried the subcontractor must be personally able to report, or have somebody report in his stead for winter maintenance services to qualify for five-hour weekly standby.
Must be personally, personally, or substitute.
Designee or something.
Or designated, like a, a qualified designated.
Subcontractor must be personally able to report.
Or parentheses, I qualified designated, qualified.
Qualified designated.
In parentheses.
For winter maintenance services to qualify for.
I think that's, it sounds fine.
Right, so they're leaving personally, and able to report in parentheses for a qualified designated to report for winter maintenance services to qualify for a five-hour weekly standby.
No parentheses on it.
Able to perform the task.
You had the parentheses, I think, in the wrong spot. Only one's parentheses wrong, I believe, is the other person.
Just the other person.
No qualified.
Dan just had a good idea.
Yeah.
Something to the effect that equipment and qualified operator.
Well, the equipment's in the other line.
Oh, okay.
Subcontractors' equipment must be operational and ready, that was the first part of it.
Qualified. Okay, I agree with Lee's point.
Okay, so leave that in, Lee, and get that wording squared away.
Yeah.
Now, what about the time period? Do we still have to win a time period? Sunday, third Sunday of November for a period of twenty weeks?
I think the time period worked out fine.
Yes, it did. Everybody was very happy with it.
Twenty weeks, what's your year?
Around the first of April, I don't know.
Okay, that's, that's what I was looking at.
I think this year it ended up being like the third law because of the way the calendar felt, I don't know.
I think it's fine.
That's, that's fine, you know, 'cause if we look at.
It's through March.
We look at the month of April, usually the roads sometimes are posted. So it doesn't, you know, if somebody's gotta just be plowing, it doesn't make a difference, you know, so. Yeah, no. I don't have a problem with the twenty weeks, just, I was wondering where that was.
I, you know, we gotta have a start date, and then they, and I think they worked fine last year.
Yeah.
The key would be the twenty weeks.
And overall, your opinion of the site could work well last year?
Yeah, and the guys were very happy, they were all very appreciative of it. Kind of softened the blow, 'cause we had a couple of weeks there, and a row that we had, you know, it was awesome, they got a little bit for being available, having their vehicle up and ready, and insurance and all that.
Great.
But if we have any kind of weather at all, they give more than five hours.
Oh, yeah.
Officials, all definitely, but it worked very well. Okay, we're very appreciative of this.
Okay. The next one, item number seven, travel allowance, do we want to continue with this benefit? Change wording to include the reference that personal sick, comp time, holidays, or vacation leave does not count as time work. Each line add full-time or part-time work in a minimum.
Well, I, I know the guys at the transfer station are happy with it.
I'm gonna, maybe I'll give the transportation manager easier, like they've been chiming in on it. You wanna say anything?
Oh, it's, I don't agree with some of it in the policy, but I mean, that's an argument for another day, 'cause I don't know, if you look at that person, at least the way I read it. My comp time is time work, it says during the person, if you use comp time, then you get knocked down. So I don't, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that part of it.
Yeah, but the argument for that, really the argument for that, you're getting paid once for those hours worked, and then when you're on comp time, you're getting credit for hours that you didn't work, that our credit has worked again, so you're getting paid twice for the same sets of time.
The other thing is, I requested a copy of this policy and never got it, I requested it two months ago, three months ago.
That's why we're working on it.
And never got a copy of, so I have no idea anything other than what you guys tell us about it. And far as I know, I mean, the crew we have seems to be happy with it. They haven't said anything.
I know that earlier in the year, there was a lot of confusion because they were getting a separate check, but it was almost like it was not part of their pay. So they were looking at how much they were getting paid, and they weren't including this amount.
Right.
And to me, it was very hard to make those people who work at the transfer station realize that they were getting additional monies in that paycheck, even though it was a separate pay under travel allowance.
Right.
We determined to do that because that portion wouldn't have been taxed, and actually gives them a higher rate of pay than if we put that in the regular pay and it gets back.
And I don't know how, 'cause you and I have gone and talked to them before and explained it, I, I don't know how to explain it to them any different than, you know, what's better, explain.
So my vote is to include it in the regular pay and not have it as part of our.
I, I, I think it worked out, I think it worked out well, I talked to two members down there, one had no idea, 'cause he just gets money, he says, "I don't care what I get, as long as I get a paycheck." So, and the other gentleman said, "It's a great thing, it's more money in his pocket, and, because it's less paid money to federal, the federal taxes and state, I don't know, state taxes and per se payroll taxes, social security."
And the new guy's anxious to get his first one, so.
Yeah, so I too, but you're.
I, you know, I, I kinda differ with you, I don't think putting it back in the pay just puts an onus on them, on both sides, actually. It's an expense to both sides, whereas it's, it's free money, it's tax-free for them.
Yeah, I just don't, I've never cared for the wording of travel allowance to work at a job at the transfer station, it just doesn't, doesn't sit right, I just think if we should, if we're paying them, we should just make their pay the right amount and not have this, but. I'm only one select.
It is, it is a retention tool, it's been used in other industries, I know, 'cause I used it a lot when I negotiated contractors, I got the guys' tra- travel time. That's where that came from, was what I had used, and when you talk to the people that are directly involved with getting it, they kinda do understand it. We've had a couple of people that may have been confused, but that's.
I remember back at the beginning of the year, there was more than a couple confused, it was almost everybody down in that transfer station, so. So, you know, my thought is that we shouldn't have it in there at all, but that's just my vote, I guess, was put up to a vote, and if you guys wanna leave it in there, we'll leave it in there. It looks like the only change we're asking to make is full-time and or, full-time or part-time as the beginning to each sentence on there, from what I'm reading here.
Yeah.
You guys see that?
Yep.
So.
I'd, I'd say we can review it again in the year, I could see it go for somewhat of a year, see our calls.
Okay. What do you wanna do, Bob?
I'd do too, but I think we should leave the, the sentence in there that refers to personal sick, comp time and holidays, and vacation time, 'cause you're not working hours, travel allowance is given to you to travel to and from work. And the reason we use that was to try to retain the people that are there, right now, the people that are there are happy with it. So I, you know, I can't see making that change other than leaving that sentence in there.
If they use a sick day while you think they're getting paid twice.
When they're using a sick day, well, the reason you give them a travel allowance is that they work their shifts.
Right.
So if they're not working their shift, 'cause they're sick, they don't work in their shift.
I think it's, wait, wait, it's proposed to be included, I think it's okay.
You think sick, comp time, holiday, vacation?
I mean, you could pay, it's, it's like, you're already, comp time is, you can get comp time for work every week.
We're already well with comp time, and holiday, vacation is thicker. Not the same as comp time.
No, but even, but, why should we?
They're not scheduled for the hours during holiday or on vacation.
Originally, the full-time employee was not, we're talking one full-time, it was not in there, we added it in for, to make it equitable across the board. And I think it's, just to have those things in there, it's the same principle for the part-timers as it is full-time, we want you to be there onsite working. And if you don't show up for work, then we're not gonna get the, the travel allowance. That's in the subject, if, if there's work, then you get it. So I, I, I think the recommended changes are appropriate.
How many holidays will we have in the year?
Eleven.
On the town of Dunbarton? So, eleven weeks. They're not gonna be late there. Travel allowance.
Yeah, but most of them don't get Tuesdays or Thursdays, unless you get to Christmas and New Year's.
Federal government has made it almost mandatory Mondays a new holiday in this country, so Mondays becomes a new holiday, we're not even open on Mondays.
So we're doing that notice on just full-time?
Because.
No, because if the part-timer's filling in for vacation and works forty hours, his average for the month will go up.
No, I'm looking at, I'm reading. It says full-time, physically get done working forty hours or more per week is one twenty-five.
Yeah.
And then it says full-time, personal sick, comp, holidays, vacation does not count as time work. So that sentence isn't stated for anybody but your full-time employee.
Correct, 'cause the.
They don't get anything else.
The part-time don't get any of those perks.
No sick either?
No, correct. Some towns do give the part-timers earned sick time, but we don't.
And then part-time casual. And then part-time casual?
Yeah, we found that every so often, we'd have one of our casual come in and work at one shift, eight hours. Directly, if you don't put that in, in black and white, then they qualify for the working less than twenty-two hours.
And that was in there from the beginning?
Yes.
Um, yep.
Okay, Mike has asked to leave it for one more year and see how it goes. What do you think, Bob?
I agree with him.
Okay, that's what we'll do. Okay, page thirteen. Okay, add new line to reference, full-time, please observe the actual date of the holiday, not the observed holiday date.
Yeah, so it's gonna help my accounting department to clarify that, because working with Chris, um, we've always paid our employees the actual, when most holidays fall on Monday, Monday's entitled to a floating holiday. So it would be consistent, it wasn't always very clear, um, Chris would've made it very clear, 'cause the department works.
Anybody else have a problem with that?
No.
Anybody from the audience?
I think that's good for you, Mike, Chris?
Yeah, it just solidifies our, the practice that we have.
Yep.
Okay. So eight is good, and nine, page eighteen, change the dollar amount to the amount set by the board, so that the personal plan does not need to be amended every year.
Unless you just wanna give Daniel Lyons a idea.
Page eighteen.
I, I don't like dollar amounts in there, 'cause even when it came to the highway on-call, it's easier to keep it generic, and then when you're setting the budget.
So this is on board leave?
Yep.
So as a benefit to all full-time employees, upon completion of board leave request for town authority payment to purchase flowers for charitable appreciation, um, by the choice on behalf of the town, not to exceed fifty dollars, get revoked.
I have no problem with that.
I have not a problem either.
Do we wanna just include the words saying set as, um, I mean, you can do it during the budget season, saying that we're gonna allocate seventy-five dollars this year, or, or-
We'll turn the budget, we'll put aside a certain amount of money, so that would hit it. So that's okay.
'Cause if, that stuff fluctuates, you know, you're never gonna look, and you're never gonna find out, you're getting your bunch of ferns.
Right, so I could scratch those words and just end it on behalf of the town period, and we'll take it each, um, time that we review and discuss it. All right.
Okay, I think we have a squared in, thanks.
All right, that was quick enough, I guess, for that. Personal policy review is done. We'll go on to mailbox items. Um, I'll go through those pretty quickly if we can here. Okay. We get a notice from the chief of police, Dan, Scotty was referenced to, uh, the remaining unlicensed dogs in town.
Illegal dogs.
It's done substantially, so that's good.
Statistically required, uh, as long with report, so.
Okay.
So noted.
The town clerk did give you a reminder, you want to sign tonight, if you wanna include that from that discussion.
Okay, I've already signed this today, but there's a, uh, a pay rate that we need to sign here, employee in the town. I signed the reconciliation already. I think it wasn't dated by these two. Just make sure the dates get on there. And that was from March, April. Uh, we get a note here from Pat Pansiaco, from Pansiaco Law, in reference to plowing of Kelsey Road. A couple of us have read it, we have an old Reddit just came in today, I think.
Yesterday.
Yesterday, and, uh, it's her review. I'd like the road agent to get a copy of how the town has plowed that road over the last couple of winters. Um, there was one thing in here.
There were several inaccuracies in there, as I read. I, I felt she was just completely accurate. I'm not gonna comment further on it. She asked that the board of selectmen would make a, a recommendation to the planning board. It's usually the other way around, the way we operate this town. And, uh, so I, I take it for, thank you for the notice and so noted, and the thing is, I'd like to leave it at the planning board level, regardless of recommendations. As regard to the plowing, she exaggerated, I think she was a bit modest with the plowing. Plowing was done very well. We missed a date, and I think I alluded to the one date, and we made corrective actions on the spot, so I think there was just too many inaccuracies in the letter, so I'm not gonna give it too much credulence in my book. Thank you.
I'd like to just say one thing. We've never missed a day plowed. Or a storm. It may not be done as timely a fashion as some people would like. That's all I can say on that.
Thought it was a note for-
But we have not missed a plow.
And so there's, uh, the planning board, there's some, there's, um, there's a planning board application pending. There was some information in there maybe pertinent to the planning boards, and the application's pending for them, so I leave it at the planning board level, not at our.
There's one thing that's stated in the third paragraph here that really highlighted to me. It said, "Anxious Supreme Court held that Kelsey Road did not turn to the west, extending between Mike Ginney's house and the barn by prescription." Um, they said that that road was not there by prescription in their findings, but they did not make any reference to the location of Kelsey Road. And that's in their report, so I wanna make sure that that's clear, so that the planning board doesn't get misled by how that's worded. Okay, so that's done, that's in there, Bob, if you wanna read that or get a copy. Lee, can we make sure Jeff has a copy?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the town clerk came in when I was signing some paperwork today here at the town, and the machine that we use to take care of our postage stamps has not been running properly, so they've been buying individual stamps to place postage on there. The previous postage machine, we pay a lease, a sixty-month lease of seventy dollars and change, um, per month on that. This new postage machine is seventy-five, seventy-four a month, and they won't have to buy the additional postage, so she's asking if we can approve the additional five dollars or so a month to get this corrected postage.
Who you, is she the only office that uses that?
We all use it.
And I'd like to, I'd like to have it, defer that to next week and have the, uh, our front office take a look at that.
Okay.
I was not aware that the machine was not working properly.
Old price is seventy-one fifty-five monthly, new price is seventy-five, seventy-four monthly, difference is four dollars and nineteen cents monthly, fifty dollars and twenty-eight cents a year.
So these would do away with the-
This one, the old one goes away and they put a new.
I understand that, but the postage that we now purchase at full price, a hundred at a time, it typically eight to eleven rolls each time. Those will go away?
She won't need them for her stuff anymore, she said. This, this machine is making hers get stuck in, so they have to buy that postage to put on the stuff. So it's actually gonna be a savings in town to go buy this new machine. And you know, we don't own the machine, they just give us a machine to use. It's a pretty phenomenal amount to- I'm saying if the department has an issue with it, we should just fix it.
If it's used by multiple departments, I think they also have some.
I mean, this company will replace a machine that's faulty. I never had a problem with the last changeover that we had, so I didn't.
Well, both of Deputy were here today and her, and they both said they have issues with it, so.
Okay, I will, I'd like to talk to them a little later.
Okay. We do have to sign these, we have to sign these little dogs again?
Yes.
You're kidding me?
Leave the dog alone, I told you.
Dave, I don't, Dave, I think it'd be, uh, very morbid for you to condone illegal dogs.
I don't.
No, and I'm not my book, not my book. I want those rabies shots.
Do you get pet names and kills or something?
No. I, I'm on my first dog ever, I still am. She doesn't like anybody except me.
Uh, lastly in here, um, I have a letter I forwarded to Lee in reference, uh, was sent to me by Margaret. I think she's confused the, um, Dunbar and Town Hall Restoration Committee hired Dennis Myers to finish the contract, um, to get the, um, Town Hall, um, architectural work done with all the specifications. Uh, she was thinking that we approved it as a board of selectmen, and she has gone, so I'll make sure to let her know about that. Um, and go through it. There, it looks like there's somebody gonna build it to us.
Yeah.
Um, then have to come out of their funds that were raised for that, um, with exact meaning, so I'll give her a call.
Okay, so just not, don't pay it?
Right.
Okay.
Not from our funds, it will come out of their funds. Wish I had their own five oh one, Steve, and then I believe. Okay. So that's it for mailbox items. I'd like to over- quote for public comment, 'cause we're gonna go into the non-publicly enrollment. Any public comment, right? Jeff, anything else?
Yeah, you said something that sparked my interest.
Uh-oh.
How is the town able to pay their employees without taking taxes out of it?
A travel allowance.
I got real some houses, twenty-five dollars a day or less is a travel allowance, without having to file it on your taxes.
So that's how.
Stretch. Twenty-five dollars a day, what's this, uh, well, equal for a year to one of these individuals?
What's that?
What will this equal out to, a year for an individual?
Well, they don't get twenty-five dollars a day, 'cause we've scheduled it to get from there.
That's a problem.
And that's, and, and, and potentially up to about eighty cents an hour.
And there's a bring them under the six hundred dollar a year for the ten ninety-nine?
It's not applicable, believe me. I used that back in-
Oh, are you? I just wanna know how it's done.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain some of it. I did that back in nineteen ninety in construction, with some depression. We were negotiating guys' wages, and I went to meet with a contractor that does all the stair spin-ups. And I went with the carpenter agent. And what happened was, I found out through I arrested, this is allowable, so when I went there, I negotiated almost what the carpenter had, but I didn't touch benefits, but I reduced the wages to ninety percent. But I said to the guy, "Is it possible to get twenty-five dollars a day for the guy's, his travel allowance?" And if Leo was sitting here, he would tell you, 'cause he benefited from that. And so the guy went with his calculator and was doing his numbers, with his office trailer, was doing his numbers. And he looks at me, and the carpenter agent says to me, "He's never gonna go for that." Guy turns around, shakes my hand, and we got a deal. And the carpenter looked at me and said, "I just learned something today." I told him what to do, is you call IRS in Portsmouth and you can check with them. And I'll let you know that you're allowed up to twenty-five dollars a day.
All right, then my next question is, I'm sure the town highway department guy would like to have eighty cents an hour travel time paid.
The reason we use-
Taxes.
While, while I, while I say that, we use that because it was a retention tool to keep people at the transfer station, 'cause they were coming and going just about as quick as we would.
We've, we've tried even in the past, if you remember, we've tried retention pay, bonus pay, we've tried that, hiring up pay, and the thing is, uh, I, I'm, I'm convinced that the, uh-
Well, I'm just, it, it seems to me it's not a town-wide thing.
No, absolutely, absolutely, it's, 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 just, just like as we, as the, uh, sign-on bonus was not a town-wide, it was exclusively for the transfer station.
I just, I mystified him, he said, "You don't have to take that." I expect, it's for the IRS.
The thing is, uh, I, I, I applaud Bob, because the thing is, when you, what we're trying, what we're trying to do is put more money in their pocket. And at the same time, it's a win-win, because the town saves some money too, 'cause we don't have to pay those matching, uh, social security matching type of taxes.
The only time you get taxed is if you file a twenty-one oh six, which is your mileage, when you're traveling, because you're not available for public transportation. So you file what you traveled to and from work to when you file your income tax return. You file a twenty-one oh six, and you receive mileage money, then you could be in a problem if they audit you. But without that, if you don't use that money, you can file, you know, so.
Interesting.
Come on, finish up.
Yep, I think that, uh, well, such a-
I was supposed to be on the plane if I could, but I'll quit out these.
You know, the only thing I got to add to that is, obviously, it has created a little bit of an issue, 'cause it's some discussion how things are calculated.
Yeah. It's caused a, a little issue through this first year, because a lot of them didn't realize what it was, 'cause they came to us after we gave our three percent raise, and they were still looking for different monies, and they didn't realize it.
Okay, and I just, I remember it hurt, and we could not have to pay taxes.
Well, I understand that a lot of departments are, you know, wish that they were getting it. The thing was, we were trying to find a retention tool, just tried to hang on to the-
Does it work?
We had it. So far, yeah, actually, you know, the guys are still there.
I still see a hump one side.
Then why not?
You know, what, that's, that's what we were on.
I see new faces. Just what I was taught to remember, they are, they leave.
So noted.
All right, that's enough.
It's there for one more year, Jeff.
I'm sorry. But, but this way, uh, we, we do revisit it, we discuss it, we modify, try to make it better. And the thing is, it was going back to the, uh, the sign-on bonus too. Woody wanted to quit, then come back and get the sign-on bonus.
Dave, um, I was on, I've been out a week, so did I use the wrong, um, agenda to update? Was Woody on there? I thought I put him on.
No, uh, they were supposed to put him on the afternoon, they didn't put him on. You didn't put him on, but they were gonna add him later this week, so.
So I have him here now, um, under non-
There isn't on publication.
That's okay, he wants to talk about a couple things in public first.
Yeah.
So go ahead and go get us all these.
An event that's coming up, October twenty-third, Household House is Wednesday. Gonna be in the Town Hall, eight thirty to one, at the Public Works Building. We're gonna have a meeting Tuesday night on in the Hall, so I'll have to get you more details.
October twenty-third?
October twenty-third.
Get, whenever you find it, get it, so we can get it advertised soon.
Uh, so, as you know, we had some pretty heavy rains the last, you know, with the, uh, West Park construction, watered the, uh, panels. However, we have another issue. The water has come through the roof, through the roof in the office, through the ceiling, and onto the floor. So that insulation, whatever's been in there, is soaking wet. So we're gonna have some-
Did it come through the clear panels that were?
I have no idea where it came from. I mean, during the middle of the night, I come in the morning, there's a puddle two feet in diameter.
That's probably glass insulation up there, you don't know.
Is, I know there's blown in on one side, but I think between the two ceilings is probably glass.
All right, well, let's first get those panels replaced as quick as we can get them in.
Yeah.
Those should take under a week, so let's get those up there and get that taken care of, and then we'll, no sense in fixing this.
No, but I thought you ought to be aware of that, there's a potential mold, I assume, there. Um, the other thing, real quick, some, the markets are still climbing, like it's looking good, you should start to see, I would say in the next thirty days, and I shipped some loads out, so you should see some pretty substantial checks coming in.
Okay.
I've been saving my paper for you. I got accused of stealing it from the office here, so I'm just gonna see it quick here.
It's, uh, that's good enough.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Okay, so I'm gonna make a non, um, motion, that we go non-public for our say, ninety-one dash shelf, or paragraph three, sub-paragraph four, minimum two, sub-paragraph eight, after your request of such a remedy.
Um, before we, uh, say our yeses and no's, just so we're on public comment, do you have anything for the public, Lee?
I've got implications, so.
Okay, Bob, do you have anything you wanna say and, uh?
Nothing right now.
Mike?
Oh, go put it in the public domain.
Okay, and I have nothing this week either, so I just wanted to do that. Uh, Mel, Jess on the, the public?
Missy, yes.
Martell, yes.
Okay.
We break for two minutes.